Welcome to the meeting of the Fokum Town Council. I'll get straight down to it.
Does anybody need a paper cup?
No, I've got one.
Sure, you should have one, shouldn't you? For the duration of this evening's meeting to the Court of Standing, all this par three, I and its chairman are reserved. I waive the requirement to stand and speak unless you wish to do so. Okay, moving on. The second thing that I want to say is about the temporary withdrawal of item twelve, which I know Martin's been chugging a bit, or councillor Brooks has been chugging a bit, to know. And my statement is as follows: Following Consultations for Elite Consultants, Edison's item twelve is being temporarily withdrawn. This is to allow additional time to produce a revised tender analysis report necessitated by a recent surge of interest in the church street toilet refurbishment. The paper item twelve is now scheduled to be resubmitted at the council meeting on the twelfth of February, at which point we anticipate achieving a satisfactory resolution. That's my hope. It is temporary. It's important to note that this delay may jeopardise our eligibility for any supplementary UK SPF funding. Consequently, we've been engaging in discussions with RCC and Edison's to devise a contingency plan, Plan B. Comprehensive details of any plan will be presented at the meeting on the twelfth of February. If you have any additional inquiries, please feel free to let me or the office know. Are there any questions about the temporary withdrawal of item twelve? Thank you all. The third thing I'd like to mention is that a formal complaint has been raised against me by a fellow councillor with the Monitoring Officer at RCC. I will not be responding to the complaints unless asked to do so, but I do want to say that I am innocent of all complaints allowed and will fight the allegations vigorously. Thank you. Moving swiftly on, we come to deputations from members of the public. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Can I just also highlight that over the last week or so, I have been in receipt of some nasty emails. I have since received an apology. The emails were sent to the committee at large, but I received a private apology, which I will accept. But I will not tolerate spurious and libelous accusations levelled at my family. I am willing to overlook it this once, but if it happens again, I will not. I will take it further and I will seek legal advice. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
That's what I wanted to say on the matter.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Can we, in future, can we raise an item five, councillor?
Sorry.
Not at all. I forgive you entirely. That was me just exercising my right as chairman to actually respond, and then we're going to get to the agenda proper now, so I apologise if I've been misled by my enthusiasm to get hold of my chair. Thank you. So we now go to the agenda. Item one, apologies for the absence. We need to vote on that, so as we well know, we have a bucket full. Town clerk, could you tell us who has apologies on the seat?
Hannah Williams. Obviously, we have that longstanding one. I haven't got a formal apology from Sylvia, but we all know that she's going through a lot of issues.
She is, I did actually meet her in the car park that summer. Oh, up at the pharmacy, and we had a long chat, and she's not doing terribly well, but she's bearing it one of the strain. The dog is beautiful, love the dog. And I just ignored Sylvia for most of the discussion. Yeah, okay. Are we keeping an eye track on the amount of meetings?
I'm going to check whether the six months rule is an issue now, because we're probably getting to the stage where we may have to...
She did say she was going to withdraw, but she would, in order to keep her optimistic, effectively say to her that she should wait until after the latest round of treatments before she made that decision, and she agreed with that, so.
I think it's up to the council now if I had to suggest rather than me checking on the six month rule as a question of whether this council wants to, because you can't waive that six month rule, they don't have to because of the circumstances she's going through, and you can allow her to stay on for more than six months.
I also think, oh, apologies, Chair. If memory serves, she was in, not relatively recently, but certainly inside the last three months, I think she was.
I think so.
Because I've seen her there.
Yeah.
I can't remember, I'm just saying.
I think what we'll do then is if you could check on the six month rule, just to confirm our feelings of three months, and then what we'll do is if we feel that we need to extend or waive, then we can bring that to council.
Okay.
But I'd really like to wait until she gets over her last round of treatment.
Yep.
Rather than being under pressure. But we do need to know where we are legally, and if necessary, we can bring that paper.
I think, you know, as I say, I think it's a good thing if you can communicate with the councillor and avoid the situation of someone being struck off for time limits, because it has happened, and it's probably unfair in that circumstances, because what ends up happening, that notice ends up in the press and never gives a reason why they were struck off.
I don't think Sylvia will give a damn having to speak.
I know, but it's still...
But under that, you're right.
We need to make certain we don't get to that situation.
Thank you very much for that, then.
Okay, I propose this, apologies.
Thank you. So what are we proposing, setting?
Apologies.
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 Thank you very much. Acceptance thereof, apologies. Thank you very much. Indeed, moving on to item two, declarations of members' interest in applications for dispensation. Do we have any declarations of members' interests?
No, not interested.
Looking around the room? Okay. Moving on then, item three, deputations from members of the public, we don't have any. Minutes to confirm the accuracy of the minutes from the meeting held on the eleventh, actually, there's two of them, isn't there? The eleventh and the thirteenth of November. Eleven, uh, yes, it's two. Do we have Martin, uh, sorry, councillor Brooks, I do believe you had one about your name being spelled incorrectly.
Yeah, on the minutes for the eleventh of December, minute eleven twenty four dash oh four, to confirm the accuracy of the minutes from the meeting held on the thirteenth of November, twenty twenty four, correction from councillor Brooke, rather than Brooks. So a correction of the correction.
Sorry, tell me that number again.
It's on the, on page two, the first...
On page two?
Second minute down on the, um...
Eleven twenty four. Five and oh four, that's the...
What, eleven twenty four?
Zero four.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Are there any more directions?
I couldn't see anything.
Can I have a proposer, if you have to, can I have a proposer, please? Adam, you're, for goodness sake, my mum was here, not you together here. Proposer, second there. Thank you very much, indeed. Councillors' reports and questions. So we've had the deputation from...
Yes, sorry.
No, not at all, don't apologise.
I've made a note so that short, I have to raise that again. It sounds big.
And anybody else reported questions? No, okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, chairman's and clerk's report. I'll just slaggo first?
You go first.
Thank you. Item six, I represented OTC as mayor of Oakham at the HMP Stock and Carroll service, which was very enjoyable, and we had tea, coffee and a bit of spice. Just one little anecdote about that. So when we were sat listening, watching the small band on stage actually singing and doing happy clappy stuff, the chap next to me, for the carol, the chap next to me said, "You do know that the lead singer is sentenced, he's been sentenced because he beheaded his wife, which rather took away a little town of Bethlehem, took away all the magic from a little town of Bethlehem. Please don't share that anecdote." But it was, to me, it was very interesting time, because we're actually in the prison. Other activities that I've attended on Friday the thirteenth of December with councillor Wadsworth, we attended the meeting in Victoria Hall, the representatives from Victoria Hall, and that's all detailed in item ten one, for those of you who want to know what we actually discussed, and there are some of those discussions. On Wednesday, the eighteenth of December, meeting with Anna to run, sorry, councillor Anna Dathway, to run through the budget discussion document head of the virtual meeting on the seventh of February, so.
Seventh of January.
Yeah, head of September, January, sorry, yes, I was trying to read the next thing.
Ah.
Yeah, so, okay, immediate future activities. I will be attending councillor Buckton's funeral on the Friday of the January seventeenth of fourteen ten, which will be held at the Greg Glenn crematorium. In my official capacity as mayor, I have spoken to the chap who's on, I can't think of the proper name. If anybody needs a lift, then please just let me know. On Tuesday the twenty first of January, we've got the town centre meeting at the Wisteria Hotel with the retailers and members of the ESWG. And this is a little way ahead, and I don't make apologies, on Monday the third of February, we've got the town centre place shaping. That's probably much an all day event. In the morning, we'll be walking about Oakham, and in the afternoon, be a discussion in RCC with representatives from our chamber and the consultants, placemaking. So I'm hoping we can get everybody from ESWG, go ahead.
Apologies, one with the Wisteria meeting again.
Wisteria meeting is on the twenty first.
Thank you.
Tuesday.
Tuesday the twenty first. And then following that, on the twenty third, we're hoping to have the ESWG, yeah, which is why I held it there. And then we've got the place shaping, which sounds, will we go to that, I hope, Sullyanne, will you?
Yes.
Councillor Wadsworth and Sullyanne, yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, I hope so, don't I?
Yeah. So that's the end of my briefing, over to the town clerk. Any questions, sorry?
What time was the Wisteria meeting, please? I know I was told, but I better write it down.
It's seven.
Uh, yes, good question. I'll have to look at my diary here.
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move, at town clerk.
Okay, so what we've been working on, obviously, you're all aware, the illuminations are now over, and we had some issues as always with the clocks, which we eventually sorted out, and we eventually got to the Christmas priest stayed on all day and all night, not all night beyond midnight, of course, but stayed on most of the day and night, and obviously we had some remarks about it, but it seemed to go okay. They will be, they're switched off now, and Monday next week, they will be taken down. So that's the order of that. The play areas, we're now working through all the medium risk items that came out of the latest Rosper report, November twenty twenty four, and so we're about halfway through that, and we're working through that, and we've, I've double checked, they're doing all the items, and in fact, we've just approved the payment for those. So that's that. The other thing we've been working on in the office is obviously, and I think you've just seen from the chair, we've been working hard with Ellie Gilbert, who brought in on the asset transfer. As always, no one from RCC is here, so it's, it always seems to go somewhat slower than we'd like with RCC, but we're hoping that this and next financial year will get all the assets that we've asked for transferred, and there seems to be no reluctance from RCC to do that. We've also had town centre meetings, which I think have been very positive, certainly the one we held before Christmas was brilliant. We've got another one coming on, and in that frame, we've got Hayley, who's a brilliant officer, who's working hard to try and keep the impetus going, and I think that's the important thing here, we must keep the impetus going on this town retailers, whatever you want to call it, group. We're also working, and we've just got from Lawis the first pack, intro pack of chequebooks and debit cards from Lawis, so we're working on the transfer. Unfortunately, they've forgotten to do the switch. So in other words, they've opened the bank account, but said, "Ooh, you wanted a switch", so that will come in time. The banks are like that, you just got to keep kicking on until the door comes.
Compensation under this switch guarantee. Yeah, there's a figure, it's about hundred pounds.
Yeah, there is, yeah. Well, aside that, so that's where we are.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Are there any questions, reference to two weeks? No, which case we'll move on swiftly, there's one more. Oh, sorry, keep doing that, don't you?
Have they said when the switch is now going to take place? Fabulous.
So we'll go back to them. Okay, thank you very much indeed. Item seven, I do wish to exercise, I do wish to state that with reference to various emails received from councillor Brooks regarding the church street toilet refurbishments, I wish to reassure council that tender on the contracts finder website was corrected on the seventeenth of December and has aroused interest. As previously stated, Edison will start a process of producing a revised tender analysis report following closure of the bidding process on the twenty second of January. So that's the update. Okay, so that's all I have to say about correspondence received. Moving on swiftly then, we move on to the issue of the bank statements and budget. So I'd like to, as before, start with item eight one, have a discussion, if nothing's discussed, then we'll have a quick vote and move on to the next item. So if anybody wishes to speak to item eight one, Realta's bankers reconciliation.
I was hoping, I would just like to say, because I was at the beginning of a financial meeting, I was very pleased to see that two members were reconciling our accounts, which makes it easier for me to vote on them.
That's for January, remember, that we were doing?
Oh, it's not for tonight?
We have done tonight and signed it, but the discussion you were privy to was actually for January.
This is for the payments we're going to make this year.
So this is us saying, yeah.
So what, so what invoices for two to four K, we are signing them. What you're thinking of, councillor Brooks, is the ones retrospective, which is an agenda item, and...
Yeah. Can you confirm that, obviously, because I wasn't incited previously, that this has been reconciled by two members?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
But what you heard was actually forward looking.
Yes, they saw the signing, so I'm, so I'm thanking the council for now getting on top of that and doing it.
Yeah, so eight one, we actually signed it today as well? But also go through the January payments? So are there any questions about, can I have a proposer and a second there, please, for eight one? Thank you, so that's, and as councillor Wadsworth, Dathway, councillor Brooks, thank you. Good. And a vote, please. Thank you, unanimous. And moving on to eight two, the HSBC current account. Anybody got any comments? If not, I will close with a second there. So thank you very much indeed. And a second there is, let's, let's change, go figure, yes, councillor next. Young, it's all relative, Martin, it's all relative. Eight point two, that's, and a vote, please, to me. Unanimous, thank you. Eight dot three, which is the current account, sorry, the positive count. Any comments? Proposer and second there, please.
Many late, late, thank you.
Thank you.
Second there.
Yep. And can we have a vote to accept, then, please? Thank you. Moving on to eight dot four, which is the year-to-date spend, which is, we've got two, month eight, month nine. Are there any questions? I know that councillor Wadsworth, you had questions regarding eight dot four, month eight, and I've complicated councillor and book bringing about this time.
Yeah.
Can I, would you mind if I refreshed your memory?
You can refresh my memory.
Oh, please don't.
Forty-two twenty, play air inspections, uh...
No, you've gone past the first one. Which is fourteen ninety is the first question, I think, from accountancy and audit, minus six thirty.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right, you ready for this, Elliot?
Yeah.
You're mid-capping for this. Right, I've explained already to the Chair of Finance, what's happened here is, what's happened here, Realta's preemptively thought that our internal audit and external audit, which were obviously for the previous year, would be paid this year or vice versa, get it the wrong way down, because, in other words, obviously, we do audit work, but when we do the audit work and pay for it, for instance, this audit this year, we will pay for it next financial year, not the financial year the work is being done for. That is incorrect in audit terms. It should be that we should pay for it in the year that the work needs doing. Unfortunately, Al-Rac, and not unlike Moors, are very clever. They build us now for the internal audit they haven't done. So in other words, the reason you've got minus six thirty there is they've already done that. Realta's is expecting six thirty to come in as a bill for this financial year, it never will until very shortly when we'll get another one. And I know that's complicated, but that's the explanation.
So presumably, that won't reconcile particularly?
It won't reconcile until the end of the financial year, which is six thirty, but will come in for next, for the, yes.
A few ways that they show you accepting that.
Yeah.
I agree. Shall I carry on with the reminders, or?
Yeah.
I love the enthusiasm which you're displaying, thank you. Forty-two twenty, two seventy quid, seems, play air inspection doesn't seem to balance to it, what we're expecting.
Yeah, we didn't balance to what we're expecting, that's because unfortunately, I think just one of them went into additional maintenance when it should have gone into play air inspections, so we've only had two inspections, obviously, this financial year so far, so they're about two seventy each, so that...
It's gone into forty-three twenties, what you're saying. Okay. Are you happy with that explanation?
Yes.
Thank you. Advertising four-five-four, seems to be lower than we're expecting, we know we had advertising, or did that, is that because UK SPF covered the rest of the advertising?
The trick here, this is a tricky money, isn't it? When we have a project, and we have plenty of projects like events, four cuts closed this summer, do we put the advertising as a cost to those events, or do we put the advertising as a generic thing? My view has always been that the advertising, if it's not to do with an event or a specific subject, you go in that subject, four-three-one-out, and so they're very, the only one that's gone in there is the one for councillors, which we just had.
So you're saying, I think, if I can make summarising, four-three-oh-five events promotion, that absorbs the rest of it, as does, yeah, four-three-oh-five events promotion?
I see that if you've got a summer event on or whatever, it's a cost to that event, not a general advertisement. Whereas obviously, when we advertised to get more councillors, like you, it was a generic one, and we couldn't, there was no allocation Costco they could put that into, so hence the small sum. It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Shall I continue?
Yeah, carry on.
Nine-three-double-nine, minus four-four-eight, over the page.
Nine-three...
It's the E M R, new community...
Other expenditure on page three, minus four-four-eight.
Which one number is that, nine-three?
Nine-three-double-nine.
Yeah, that's because, simply because we've got a repayment from Severn Trent, and as one, I'm trying to put this carefully, I was not around a hundred percent on the repayment, and it went into the wrong category because I was indisposed to the town.
Well, can you not be indisposed to it?
I'm not around the place, I just...
You're happy that you weren't.
Are we happy to get a proposal, we said the door, do we need more discussion?
No discussion necessary.
Okay. So proposer, please, and second to accept eight four. You've noted that, Chris.
Proposer, sorry, for voting this time. And indeed, second of course, next.
And we'll take the vote on that, please. It's unanimous, we accept it, thank you.
No, I don't believe this.
Eight five, which is the actual current month. So I have some questions, which I could do as well. Can I have a proposer and second there, if there are no questions?
Yeah.
Proposer? Second there. And can I have a vote, please? Thank you. Thank you, as I say, five accepted. And last but not least, this is the, the right effect, this is the payments over five K, there are no payments over five K in January twenty twenty five.
October.
Thank you. So this is going to be a repeat item, basically, that's going to be additional, you, go ahead.
There was a comment about something, I can't remember if it was in there or in here tonight, about the audit trail, and I have raised this, and it was one of the issues which came up in the last meeting. The five thousand pound payments should be on the agenda item with that act, the reason why.
Okay.
So it's a clear audit trail, that's what I'm trying to get from...
I'm not clear audit trail of the ones that were from previous to this month, which I'm about to pass for Clark to put in the audit file.
We have one for item nine, to cover the previous.
It's just, it should, an agenda should actually, because it's a legal document, what I'm trying to say is that it should set out in the description what we're doing, and all we're doing here is saying eight point six, spend over five K requiring approval, but it should actually be more specific to the act, and they used to do it, I spoke to Cathy earlier, but we are talking about, they used to follow that before she came here four years ago.
But that was four years ago, let's...
No, no, but it's a legal requirement.
Yeah, I know about legal requirements.
So we need to get it right now, so stop saying it's four years before.
We are getting it right now.
Yeah, but we're not, that is not the correct way of doing it.
I tell you what they'll do, can we, can we, this is getting a little...
We can expect it this time, but what I want is that we get to the future, that when there's a large payment, that it comes as the agenda item in the correct format, so that when the auditor looks down the bank statement, they can then go and see that minute that it was approved.
Okay.
Because to that, they're going to find difficulty.
You agree to process, Martin, sorry, Lewis. We, first of all, if, for instance, we did the toilets or whatever, we have to have a motion and proposal and second over that passes, we spend the money.
Yeah.
So that's where the money and the audit person will see that the council has approved a hundred K on toilets. All we're doing here is saying, here's an invoice that's coming, we're paying it, and if you want, we could put in notes, we could reference the proposal from the council where it's been passed.
No, no, I'm not asking for, what I'm asking for is that, I'm asking for that piece of legislation that we're supposed to follow, which was always on the agendas, that says for the audit trail, the reason why we are being asked to consider this, that's all. It can't be a difficult thing.
I understand what you're saying, and I think in order to progress the meeting, what we'll do is we'll...
As long as you understand, I will shut up, yeah, that's fine.
I do understand, and what you're actually saying is on, on eight dot six, it should say, payments of five K in accordance with...
Yes, and then the auditor sees that, if somebody...
There's an act or something.
Yes, exactly. Which is quite, well, we could, I'm not quite sure, or financial standing order, four-dot-one.
Four-dot-one, I see. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's a local government act, that's the problem.
But it's also our financial regulations, which is...
And it's on, yeah, which will probably have that act, female financial regulation.
Yeah, we can simply say in accordance with four-dot-one.
So you understand it now, what, so I don't need to be frustrated anymore, I can just move on.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is have a question and second there, we accept eight-point-five, or eight-point six, I'm sorry, and then we'll go to vote, and then we'll make a note in the minutes that councillor Brooks has suggested that we add the necessary in accordance with statement.
Yeah, then, because then that's minuteed then, isn't it, correctly?
That's fine, that's fine. Whether, so we have a proposer and second there, we have a proposer and a second there? Who's, who's proposing?
I propose.
Who's second there? Martin, you go second? Oh, sorry, councillor Dathway. And then a vote, please. Thank you very much indeed. So that's that. Happy to move on now to recent budget spend over five K. This is the document that we intend, oh, so we've done that, I'm sorry. Yes, exactly, so we're going into item nine now, recent budget, the retrospective spend in item nine. And this is a list of the retrospective spend, we are rapidly bringing the office into compliance, and we're working hard to bring it into compliance, and this is, hopefully, we won't see this kind of thing again. So this is actually asking council to retrospectively approve the payments over five K for November So this is actually asking council to retrospectively approve the payments over five K for November and December. You will note that there are two payments, there are in fact three payments for, to Brooklyn County Council under nine-one-five-eight-one-six-zero, under twenty-ninety-seven, second of twelve, and the fourth of twelve. That's because there is a restriction on the bank, which is now, where we had to break any payments over ten K into separate bits to try to get them paid. That is not going to happen in the future, that restriction is being lifted.
That's good.
Go on.
Um, yes, sir, just for clarification on this, this is where that minute needs to be.
So you want, obviously.
On, on item nine.
Are you happy with this as it stands though, or do you need it to be adjusted for a proposal?
Well, that's because I don't know it off of my head, and I forgot to bring it tonight.
Someone asked me, I'm not certain.
Where we, on the proposal.
There was a financial regulation on here.
Okay, well, that's easy, have we made a proposal?
Because it was something, I know that they don't like the past, but it was something that was pulled up by an auditor in the past. That's why I know about it, you know, I didn't know anything.
Let, let, I think this is quite simply, uh, resolved in that we.
But if it's done in the minute, then that's going to be a clear thing.
Well, let's, let's, the proposal can be, the council proves the person listed above for November, December twenty-four, in accordance with four dot one. Financial regulation's four dot one, that covers everything, doesn't it?
Do you know it's four dot one?
I do, I was talking to me, hey, I've read it in that bloody. In my thirty minutes of work, I do want the budget.
The clerk will get the wording correct, won't he, so.
Yes, so that's the proposal, so if everybody's having a proposal for that proposal, thank you very much indeed, a second, thank you very much indeed. Now, let's have Martin for seconding, that'd be really good if you were in your hand, and then we'll have a vote. It's good to pin it down, Martin, right. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
So, Jessica, say.
I don't know, I'm just passing it on as I've been told to.
Okay.
Everything that I've written notes on when I quizzed you and Cathy about, so there is then, you can see what we've got, because I've, audit file, please.
Thank you, so, um, if we're happy to move on, let's go on to item ten, Victoria Hall survey negotiations. So we're all aware of the negotiations that went on with, uh, Victoria Hall, there is, they are actually documented in, uh, ten-one, I believe, is the minutes and the, the, uh, speak Paul, the actual agenda that I drafted and the discussions that went on, we've had. So let's talk about that then. So we agreed at that meeting that we would, they would provide us with a series of documents, which, how lovely to see that R C C have also recommended exactly the same list, what we, um, Gail Waller, councillor Gail Waller, sent an email. And, um, we have agreed that we will undertake a building survey. So I'd like to discuss the proposal, one please, reference item ten dot two on the email.
Have we received any documents yet?
Nothing, and we have chased.
We won't.
Well, if we don't, the negotiator's going to store.
Yes.
Yes, negotiator will store, we're not going to be, um, so what we're suggesting is that we, we pursue a building survey at the cost of two thousand point sixty-five, and of course, we'll get email from, uh, Grantham. Go ahead, you want to speak?
I don't want to speak, I'm just a bit concerned, right, you're saying that they're not going forward with the documentation that we have requested. If we're not going to take it any further, I'm a bit concerned about spending two thousand four hundred and sixty-five pounds on something that's just not going to happen. Um, do you know what I mean?
I do. We, we, we as a council can say that subject to the documents being received from, we, we can add a, a clause in there. What goes over, it says that subject to documents being received from O T C and showing their intent, we will then proceed with a building survey, is, is that, you have to add that?
To further, yeah.
Okay, so what we're going to say is that, uh, with reference to item ten dot two, email council, approves initial building service, blah, blah, blah. Um, and then insert a sentence there that said, this will be subject to, uh, receipt of the documents listed above and that O T C, uh, sorry, Victoria Hall, wish to continue with the discussions.
Yes.
Is that sufficient? Have you captured that?
Yeah.
Brilliant.
Yes.
Can I, I, I don't want to be sounding awkward, but can I just raise a point of order? Because I did very carefully study the standing orders for proposals, because obviously I did one before and it all went a bit funny. Um, we have to debate it all first. And then a proposal amendment has to be put, there can be more than one, but not until everybody has debated it all. So you can make a note of that, Sally Ann would.
We've made a note with it, we, we haven't, we haven't actually voted on a proposal.
No, no, but I'm just saying that that's what I read this afternoon.
And we were going to do that, so, uh, continuing with the debate. Councillor Wadsworth has raised that point, has anybody got any other?
She might have something else, sorry, but I just interrupted on what I read, I could do as a point of order.
No, there's nothing more, that's, that will do me fine.
Made me feel like I was at R C C there, raising a point of order.
Please, so, what I'm trying, I'm trying, yeah, um.
All that's happened here that, uh.
As we've noted, the amendment that is set us.
Yeah.
All that's happened is a person that.
Oh, no, nothing's gone wrong.
Yeah, no, the chair has made a proposal. All that's happened is councillor Sally Ann Wadsworth has asked for Paul Engley to accept the proposal, to accept an amendment to his proposal, which is perfectly acceptable. Paul, as a councillor, has accepted that, so it's still a substantial proposal. Because he's accepted an amendment, it's not, this is not another proposal or alteration. So the debate can continue because the person.
But we can't vote on it, yeah.
Yes, no, we don't have to, because he's accepted the amendment. So his amendment is now the one that goes forward with the proposal, it's history.
Just so you guys have enough time to say.
So what I'd like to do now, I'm sorry.
I'll just, is, is it just point one you're on?
Yes.
Because obviously, point two is also, yeah, but point two is obviously spending money too.
So point one then, we have councillor.
Am I allowed to have my say on?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you, um, I'll try and keep it brief. Um, but basically, I, I have a similar opinion that we're spending on money on something that we don't own. I read the report, which says in so many words that it's not clear what is required to be surveyed. But also I read that they can't survey the roof because of access issues. So it, it seems a lot of money for what, I'm not quite sure what we're going to be getting from the survey. But also, um, over the Christmas period, I contacted a trustee of Victoria Hall because I've been very unclear whether this council has voted to actually take over or proposed to take over as controlling trustee. And I think that's very important before we spend any money to know whether this council actually wants to go down that road. So the reason I wrote to Victoria Hall trustee was to ask, had they voted that they were happy for Oakham Town Council to, um, become the controlling trustee? Because that's what it means, we will take control if the charity commission accept it. The response was pretty poor, I was told to go away, don't have time to answer your questions, speak to your representatives. So that's not really very helpful. But I do have the concern that if we spend public money on this and we don't have it set in stone that both parties agree to Oakham Town Council taking controlling trusteeship, which I fully support, we should, then I think we would be wasting money. So that, that's what I finish on.
Can I respond to that?
Um, Victoria Hall, despite the fact it's run by trustees, I would argue is, in trust, I've said trustees, because it is a public asset of sorts. It's going to be, a survey, if done, will be in the general benefit of the public, whether or not Oakham Town Council takes on direct management of the hall or not. So I would suggest that actually, to get an appreciation for the benefit of the hall and the people of Oakham, it's neither here nor there, who does it, whether it's under their own steam or whether we essentially subsidize that with no furthering of the agenda, follow me. Did that make sense to anyone, Jess?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councillor Daltry.
Um, from what I've read as well, was these surveyors were thinking of using a drone as long as Oakham School were not in opposition to it, to survey the roof.
Yeah.
Because obviously that can get to places where people cannot. So you, you'd see exactly the same thing, you just wouldn't know if you'd fall from the roof if you stood on it. But it would still survey the roof, as long as they can clear it with Oakham School.
I, sorry.
Yeah, that, that was, that was it.
Okay, thank you, I, I am actually, um, clearly, I mean, I've drafted this proposal with, with councillor Wadsworth amendment, I think it's a sensible thing to do. I think primarily, we do have to be careful of whether we're just going out on a limb. But I do feel that, given the dire financial straits of Oakham Town, of Victoria Hall, and the fact that we've had initial conversations, and we're moving towards actually drafting up a contract with red lines, I really can't see why anybody would object with the amendment that councillor Wadsworth has suggested, so. Um, I'd like to propose, oh, sorry, is the debate finished?
Yeah.
I'd like to propose that we adopt the proposal, uh, for item one from councillor Wadsworth. Do I have a proposer, please, councillor Wadsworth?
Yeah.
And a second, councillor Nick. Can we have a vote on acceptance of that proposal, please, item one? Councillor Brooks, are you abstaining?
I am voting against.
You vote, okay.
Do you need it recorded, councillor?
No, if you want to, you can.
It's your choice.
It's your choice.
Okay, I can record it, great.
So you're voting against?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got three in favour, four in favour, one against.
And for those reasons I stated, because nobody, nobody's agreed that they want to do it.
We don't need to have any reason given, thank you. So I'd like to move on to item ten dot three, please, sorry, what am I talking about?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Proposal two, which discusses the, uh, initial legal consultation with the solicitor, again, I think it would be prudent to, uh, add in an amendment, if somebody wants to propose it, that we, uh, wait for the documents from O T C. So that we can, uh, actually just gauge their, that, that, their willingness to engage. Um, what this is, clearly, in my book, what I'm saying is that we need to engage with Victoria Hall, they need to actually show that they are serious in their approach. And that we then need to sit with the solicitor and draw up our red flags. So clearly, our red flag would be, we need to protect public investment, that's, that's the primary thing we need to do. If we invest any money in Victoria Hall, we need to understand whether it's, and, and they need to say what are their red flags on their negotiation. And then with, by talking to the solicitor, we can actually get some indication of what is possible and what is not as possible. And what we're proposing is, and we've started to actually draw up some dates, uh, that we're proposing, we have a virtual meeting with the solicitor and the Victoria Hall trustees and ourselves to actually lay out our red flags. You don't have to have a meeting by red flags, yeah. So that's, that's why I think this is important. And I think as long as we put the, change the proposal in my paper to actually say, exactly the same as you did in item one, uh, that they have produced those documents, I think it's something that I would like to propose as an amendment to that proposal, so.
Go on.
I wouldn't.
No, we have to wait now until, until it's time that we've finished our debate, yeah.
You can still have a proposal on second, it can be debated, you don't have to vote straight away.
Okay, let's have a proposer then for that amendment.
What, what is the amendment, it's the same as before.
Yes.
Um.
Have a proposer?
Yeah.
Proposer, can I say it, it is okay?
Okay.
Okay, and so we'll have the vote immediately after the debate, which is, Martin, councillor Brooks, you want to speak?
It's more a comment than, um, one of the things that concerns me about the two groups sitting down and say, we'd like to do this, has anybody actually thought of going to the charity commission? Who would have the ultimate say in what happens to the trustees' positions at Victoria Hall?
We, uh, we're better relying on our solicitor to advise us whether, and then we will then approach.
Because they, they are the organization who will authorize any change. And one of the things where I don't want to have delays and want it done properly is if Victoria Hall goes bust, we won't have any slaves, they will appoint, like they've done in a hall in Leicestershire, they will appoint their own legal trustees, and they won't take any notice of Oakham Town Council once that happens. So I, this is why I'm concerned about how, it, it never seems to say anything about going to the charity commission before something happens, I think it would be.
It did an initial document.
It would be wise to get advice from them, as well as this legal solicitors. Maybe they can do it on our behalf.
Could I just ask what you're seeking here? Because obviously, we will do nothing without the solicitor's advice to take over the trust.
No, no, and what I'm saying is that.
And you're aware that the trust itself, if you read it, Victoria Hall trustees are not following anything hardly of what the.
I know.
Trust actually says, so it shows how much the charity commission have been involved.
I know, but if they, i- if somebody was to sit down, which is what happened to this community centre, and actually write a formal complaint and detail what they're not following, then they have to take action. They've got millions of charities, so they're not going to be looking at Victoria Hall, whereas, uh, so what, what I'm saying is that I would, I, I don't want it to fall through, I want a Stanford Arts in Victoria Hall. And I want it, but I want it to be done so that it happens, not, not that Victoria Hall turn around next week and say, we, like they did here when they asked for a grant, they sat there publicly and said they didn't want us to be involved, now they've changed their mind.
Chris, next is one thing to come in, councillor Chris next.
Yeah, sorry.
You just need, Martin, you just need to get the context, we approached L R A C. This is a person, the person we've got under the charity or solicitor, Welleslaw.
Yeah.
He has done this many times before. He will advise us a step-by-step way that the council can do this without getting on, no, and this, oh, Nick is in a twist.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
But I also think then in that, in that case, we don't need your amendment. Because if you are going to get charity commission advice through the solicitors, then this is the perfect opportunity to make sure that you're going in the right direction.
One, one was just a query from, um, did, are we sure that it's, that the charity commission is involved at this point? And it hasn't, did that, are we aware that it, actually, that the ownership and trusteeship was changed from the agricultural society to the charity commission?
No, the charity's not happened, no, nothing's happened.
No, I, I think what you're saying, the current, the, currently the trustees are the trustees of the building and of the, oh, what are those words are that actually describe what the aims and objectives of the trust are? And all additionally, those aims and objectives are, actually talk about supporting the agricultural community in Rutland. And actually, when, um, that is obviously so far from the truth. Now, I know that when I was a trustee, before I stepped back, that I made an attempt to try and get the charity commission to change it without any expense. So we, we're handing it ourselves, that I found far too difficult. And so Joanna Burrows left in, like the mighty mouse she is, to try and actually pick up the work that I've been doing. She has also stepped down from that. And so now what we have is, because it's all too damn difficult negotiating with the trust, with the, with, with the charity, with, sorry, with the charity commissioners, so where we are is we still have a terms and objection, I don't know what terms to use, I'm sorry if I'm failing everybody, but we don't know that this actually isn't present fully, they, those that have to be changed, so they say that we support the community, et cetera, et cetera. And then we would then have to go back with our proposals to the charity commission and say, we're proposing this, and that will be handled by our solicitor. Now, we are anticipating, I know previously, when we engaged initial solicitors and I don't know whether this is relevant, but there was something in the order, three and a half to four K for them to engage fully, they want to hold nine yards, which is why Victoria Hall backed away and wanted us to do it. So does that answer your question?
Essentially, yes, thank you.
Essentially, I'm sorry if I, we're wiggling on.
So we're still beholden to the charity commission in either sense.
In any sense, we are beholden to charity commission, and actually, those terms of reference are so far in the day, we cannot take them on with whatever those things are called, deeds, covenants.
It may be that in the end they have to wind up that charity, and then hand over the ownership to Oakham Town Council.
Yeah, if I may, that was a proposal on the table at one point, and they were actually talking about going to another vehicle that actually allowed them to become owners of the hall, and of course, that raises a whole.
Well, it was too risky for a community enterprise.
Well, it was, it was considered by trustees, so what I'd like to do is propose item two with the amendment as suggested earlier.
Okay.
So.
Yes.
Can I just?
Sorry, I thought you finished the one.
Yeah, can, can I just say that if we have that amendment, then that stops you getting any advice for us to do it. Because if they don't send all these documents, which appears that they might not, then we are gonna now vote with this amendment, saying that that's got to happen, that will stop the office and yourself and the working group getting any legal advice if, until.
And I think that.
But I, I, I would like to put across that we don't, we don't attach that, because we're getting advice for ours.
Are you proposing an amendment to the amendment?
No, no, we, I'm just trying to explain the position, so that when people consider it, because we have to consider it, because it's been amended, um.
You can reject the amendment, but what I'm saying is you can't negate it and say, take it away again, no, you have to stick with it, well, if you want as a council to say, hold on a second, the office and the chair can go ahead with negotiations without these documents with the solicitor, then you can.
Yeah, just the solicitor.
You can vote against this proposal, and then it goes back to the substantive motion.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see, but obviously that's for members to, it seems the sensible way, because you, you need advice.
I think we need, we need to vote, first of all, we need to vote whether we want to accept the amendment to the original proposal.
Yep.
So can I have a proposal, please, that's going to be me, and we had a second already.
You've already done that.
So can we have a vote on whether we want to accept the, a maintenance to the second proposal? So that's four, four is carrying, I'm sorry, Martin.
Because that means you can't go to more and get advice.
It means that we can't actually pay for the initial, yes.
We can't, it's further protected financially realistically.
It's a shame.
Well, that, we've voted on that, so can I? Thank you, well, they may, well, they. Uh, agenda item eleven, councillor recruitment. Um, I'm hopeful you've all had a chance to look at this, um, essentially, what it's saying is, we haven't had a lot of success recruiting councillors, and we have had even less success getting councillors to attend meetings, it appears. I'm not blaming that, no, please don't, uh, but then what, what, so what, I, I think this paper is introduced in with the idea of trying to re-energize our town council members and to widen our sweep. So, um, I'll open it to the floor for debate.
You want a copy?
I've got it.
I've got, I've got.
So.
I have nothing to discuss, I have nothing to say, but go ahead.
Yeah, a second.
What are we going to?
Proposal second, did you?
Yeah.
Thank you very much indeed. Um, there's no discussion needed, so can we have a vote on the proposal as she's written, please? Three in favour, councillor Brooks.
But we haven't decided which ones we're gonna do with the advertising.
We're doing it all.
Are we? Okay. Okay, then I will go with it.
Okay, with, as you've indicated, thank you very much.
I'm not convinced that the Ruffin Times is worthy of it.
You just never know.
How did you?
How dare you?
Well, okay, let me just bring the meeting to, our local rag. Let's just bring the meeting, that's, the item twelve church street toilet renovation is being removed and will be resubmitted on the twelfth of February. So, um, I now draw a meeting to a close.
Well, I don't know.
You're keen to go, you're keen to depart.
Is it the one?
Policies in routine.
Oh, yes, the most important, isn't it?
He's just going away tomorrow, he's so excited, he's not got a change.
No, I'm sorry, I've, it's not my agenda to be doing this. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I and others spent an inordinate amount of time listing the, we've listed, can I have that paper, please?
Yeah.
I just don't have anything, I don't know what's happened here, normally I'm so organized. Oh, there it is. Good, so, uh, spent a lot of amount of time, basically, I drew, we drew up two lists. Uh, one is thirteen one, which is those documents that we consider uh, didn't need any amendment, and thirteen two, which is those documents which are in need of moderate, severe and light amendment, but nonetheless of additional work. And in order to, to actually spread the workload, uh, it is suggested that we have a review period as listed on thirteen one, whereby, for example, the capability procedures, which are, goes to a review period of only three years, others go to two years, employee private privacy notice goes to three years, information available from O T C and the bottle publication scheme, which went for five years, and so on. So what, what this proposal is simply saying is that we will be bringing back those documents on thirteen two, but for thirteen one, that council extends a review date of those documents that require no modification as listed in item three, thirteen one. The thing I wish everybody to bear in mind, you're not signing your life away. If upon reflection and six months' time, you believe that the Oakham neighbour hub land steering group needs to be reviewed every thirty seconds, we can bring that back to council.
Because it's six months.
Uh, yeah, you're right, you're right. But it is open to amendment, that's the thing, and we're not, we're not bound forever into a mire of please, just a really good, okay, I'm opening the floor to debate. Councillor Brooks.
You've put on here Protocol for Recording twenty thirty, um, number twenty. I, I would like that reviewed, because if it's the same as it's always been, it doesn't comply with government, um, things, because it basically says you have to sit in that corner, and that's it, but and that you can't edit it, you can't do this and you can't do that, because they didn't at the time it was first drawn up, like many councils, they didn't actually want people to record meetings, so there is a, on the government website, a Protocol for Recording, and
Okay.
it could be just reviewed and checked against.
There's no harm, no problem with that.
Two thousand, I think it's two thousand and eleven act onto the local list.
Okay, I have no problem with that, that's a.
Thank you.
So it'll be number twenty onto the list of.
Thirteen two, yeah.
Yeah, so it was very poorly written.
Okay, not a problem for me, anybody got any other, so that will be an amendment?
Um, and, and one other thing is things like, um, I know you said that it can come back, but things like all the employment things, employment law changes quite often, so.
The, the private privacy notices, I don't think employment law is actually contained.
All sorts to do with employment, basically, policies change.
Yeah, well, we left those at the standard year, I think, the privacy notice policy is pretty static, but the equal opportunities policy standard procedure has gone to one year, so I, I think the employment law is covered, actually.
Okay, thanks, sorry if I wasn't.
More, more important than employment law, we're levels trumped, whatever we do here.
Yeah, that's what we said, we're not, we're not above the law of the land.
But whatever, that document will be trumped, I don't.
Okay, um, councillor Brooks, have you finished?
Yes, thank you, sorry, I just want you to.
In fact, that's an observation that goes for all of documentation and all laws of land, so.
Yeah, exactly, we can play, we can play game, maybe it's in so which, yes. So with, as a debate, have we finally had to go, can I propose proposal that we accept thirteen point one as amendment under suggested review period date and remove item twenty and put it onto thirteen two? Yeah, proposal second, and let's have a vote, please. Way, this has been outstanding for about two thousand years and so many, thank you, past unanimity. Way, good, thank you all, everybody, I really appreciate that, so we've just got six documents now, of course. Another minute, closing the meeting, next meeting is, I just want to look at the now, though. Next meeting is on the twelfth of February, no, it's not, it's a needle.